All right.
We don't have to call it to order, we don't have to take a roll call, this this basically continue the discussion that we had at last week's council session regarding the water and sewer rates.
I'll just jump in, man, I know I wasn't there, but what I've been hearing is everyone seems like they understand that this does need to change, that we are going to have to increase these rates. I think some of the question comes in, and I had the same question, I think, that Brian did is we were looking at, and I think the presentation was built around three years.
Three years.
And is that, I guess, what's the basis for three years? And is it, you know, first of all, possible to do this five years, six years, seven?
To spread the.
Just to spread the days.
Yeah.
Yeah, spread out some of that increase in the rates and, you know, originally, you know, originally, I was looking at kind of just pulling off the Band-Aid and getting the city, you know, a recommendation to kind of get you up to speed just with just with this increase in operating expenditures. And certainly, you know, especially with the sewer is really this rate increase that we have over the three years basically keeps the fund about break even. And so if I spread out any of that rate increase any further and, you know, if if operations don't meet, the city's gonna, you know, start drawing into those funds. And so that's where as I came up with the three years is basically say, hey, we need to get you to a point of that the rates are meeting just regular operations. And I stretch it out to three years in order to kind of keep you about break even to that point. If I stretch it out any further than that, it just makes things a lot more difficult and you're starting to really draw down in there. So if there's anything that is on, you know, that comes up that is outside of budget that you're drawing down for one time expenditures, it's really gonna put pressure on the sewer. So I wouldn't recommend going out any further than further than that three years. The other thing.
First year, I'm gonna jump in, that that ten percent is, I mean, that's just a very big chunk. I'm not, I'm not saying it's not necessary. I just, you're just trying to find a better way to approach that without, I know it's, I understand the methodology of tear the Band-Aid off. But also, you go at two or three percent, people go, oh, oh, we can't do that. And and then to come back and say, oh, yeah, that, no, we need to go 10%. And I get it, the the basis is there for it. But John and Joan Q. Public are going 10%. We were, we've been doing two or three percent. What happened? How did, how did this happen? And we have to have a good explanation. I'm not saying that this isn't where we go, but I think we need to have a way that this makes sense. You know, so that they're not just, I just, I just think there's gonna be, you know, and again, it's an upheaval, it's costs are up.
So this is, so this is, this is factoring in a six million dollar loan, right?
Well, the the 10% for next year, I think you're referring to the sewer, to the sewer. And then for the, and then for the water is also 10% as well. Um, you know, and I, I don't want the council to get fixated on the, on the 10% because it does, it seems, it seems large. When you look at those dollar differences on the water, you know, if you're, you're using 4,000 gallons, the water 10% increase is $4.36. So, you know, those average users are seeing, you know, less than $5 increase, which, you know, $5 is is not insignificant, but it's also, you know, it's, it, it, it's not an exuberant kind of a number. Then for the sewer, you know, that same 4,000, that 10% is, you know, $7.34. So, you know, looking at, you know, overall increase for 4,000 gallon, which is the average user is, you know, 11 to 12 bucks.
So there's nothing statutorily that says we can't stretch it out further. The concern analysis wise is we're playing catch up on the rising costs over the last couple of years. Is that the way you're?
Statutorily, that you do have to stay within 110% of your, you know, your revenues have to be 110% of the payment after operating expenditures. And really, here's the thing is, is if you take a look at the enterprise fund, especially for the sewer, in order just to, just to have 70,000 of one-time capital expenditures, you really have to be at about 1.3 to 1.4 times. Just to, you know, just to have some additional cushion for one-time expenditures, which is pretty, which is pretty typical. So I'm really running you from the sewer standpoint, break even, if not a little bit of a deficit already. So from that standpoint, you know, statutorily, we really do need to have those, those those sewer rate increases occurred now. The water rates, we know those expenses are coming and, you know, I, I always suggest that when we know those expenses are coming, the sooner you have those in place, you know, the ea- the easier it is because you're maintain, you're really maintaining, you're maintaining your cash balances and, and you're giving yourself that flexibility that if this, this new water project comes in that more than 6 million, we can use a little bit of cash, we can use those types of cushions in order to stay within this plan. If you extend that out, then sometimes that rate increase that I've, you know, if we extend that out and don't have that additional, you know, cushioning cash, you know, that third rate increase may look different if, you know, costs come in a little bit higher or, you know, operating expenditures continue to jump higher than projected. So, um, I, I, I get, you know, maybe wanting to hold off. But basically what I've kind of put in front of you today is extending it out in that, that needed rate increase already. You know, four to five years, you're such a growing community, there's, it's likely that there will be more projects or more other planning that will have to occur really in that third year. That, you know, the numbers could look a little, could look different. And I, you know, once you're, once you're really projecting out more than three years, you're really running into quite, quite a few assumptions. And you're probably looking at those rates already by year three anyway.
Right, you're quickly on the water side of things, the 10, 12, 15%, how much of that percentage, I know you probably almost have definitely, maybe a rough number, how much does that increase based off of the water tower costs?
Um, if you give me a second, just, just a minute or two, I can definitely take a look at that.
Remind me, are we in or out of compliance without the water now right now?
We are out of compliance.
Right.
Survey of the 2022, right?
That is the rate, that was a study that Steve did, yes. And since then, we've added users. So I'm sure that's.
It's like the debt for the water tower starts coming online July 1, 26 in this spreadsheet. And the bigger payments are a couple of years behind that.
Yeah, to be interest first on like.
And I've structured that mainly just to, to allow for, to allow for the other debt to be paid off.
Right. All those other water debts fall off, 2013, we almost get rid of 2017. Yeah, so you stacked it. We've got two years left of water debt payments on the 2017 general obligation or SRA. That's right. And then, then, then we're looking at close to half a million dollars a year in debt payment for the rest of it, right? It's a 20-year loan?
Yes.
So, for a long time.
I'm getting close here. You know, I would say the majority of the rate increase is, is to continue. Because, you know, if you didn't have a new debt payment coming on, you know, you'd have, you're really having, you're really having a, oh, you know, a load of, you know, the two thirty, basically from 2024, you had 236,000. And then if you had no, basically no debt payments going forward, you know, you could probably still maintain that 2% kind of going forward, but the majority of it is based off of this water. But it's just, it's just unlikely that you're not going to have some sort of financing or some sort of large project to be financed with it. So, you know, with the assumption that you'd have no debt payments in a couple of years, you know, you wouldn't have to do rate increases. You just kind of stick to that inflationary increase.
9%.
So, you know, are you comfortable with say 80 to 90% of this rate increase for water is related to the pop, the tower project?
Yeah.
Yeah. And most of the sewer rate increases catching up with existing expenses and getting us to where we are solvent long term. And our big capital expenditure was the treatment facility.
Yes.
Years ago, that, that's coming online and we have the cost increases of the last three years. That's kind of what I'm understanding it.
Yeah, that's, that's really it is, is that you've, yeah, you've got your wastewater treatment plan, it's coming online. We had the increase in expenditures, the operating expenditures really, you know, we had built in that operating expenditures were going to increase every year and we, we built in over 100,000 increase in expenditures. It just turned out that basically expenditures doubled. And more than doubled, you know, in the last five years. So that's really where the sewer is coming from. The water is 80 to 90% of it saying, hey, we've got a $6 million project kind of coming in. And just need to prepare for those payments.
I'm trying to remember, I feel like I participated, I've only been on this for a little over two years, but I participated in, we did a rate increase in like a couple of years ago. What, what was that for sewer at that time?
3%. I think it was 3%, wasn't it Heidi?
Yeah, and that was just to cover the additional sludge project as well. And really, really where the kind of the, the, the red flags of, of the, of the increase in operating expenditure was in 2024, when 2025 came in and then budgeted numbers for 2026. And it was really seeing the trajectory of those three fiscal years coming in and saying, okay, hey, these operating expenditures are, are, have really risen. And that's really when, you know, when, when you're finishing up fiscal year 25 and running for, you know, running these fiscal year 26 numbers, that's really when the, when it was becoming apparent that these operating expenditures were increasing above and beyond what was expected.
They're just different, they're different arguments.
Did we ever, did we ever take a look at those operating expenses then? You know, deeper into why they were such an increase?
Yes, I know that Dean and Marcy met multiple times and included Heidi in on those conversations too. And it's, it's out of our control. It's solely the suppliers, it's solely the, the operating equipment that needs to be replaced as, as increased in cost. And now it's gonna get more expensive with the tariffs that are being enacted. Some of these equipment that we have to get from overseas are gonna be tariffed.
What type of equipment do we need for the sewer, the wastewater treatment plant that we? I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, and I, I can't list what, what pieces of those equipment are because there's multiple pieces, there's pumps, there's pipes, there's, there's so much that are, that's involved in putting that pump in the ground. So I can't tell you that the pump is gonna cost as much and the, the shell for the pump is gonna cost as much and the stick.
So it's not necessarily for the wastewater treatment plant, it's for?
It could be for the listation and for if something were to go wrong at the wastewater treatment plant. That's out, I don't know where we are in warranty, but if that part is not a warranted part, then we have to pay full price. And I can't tell you where that part's coming from, nor can I tell you what that price is.
Yeah, I guess my point is to be, to be, to be truly challenging and say, okay, what, what are these costs? And could we go a different route to get these parts? And I don't know these answers, right? So when you're looking like your household budget, right? I wanna shop here, but that's twice, that's twice.
It's just like everything else.
Walmart, don't you go to again?
Right, right, it's just like your groceries, it's just like your car insurance, it's just like everything else. Everything else has risen exponentially and we're all looking for ways to cut costs.
I just wanted to do that. Well, I'm guessing, you know, because if you look at the numbers here, John, it's like 26,000 are offset, right? Right. You know, so I mean, that is probably with words. Supplies have gone, not just equipment, that probably mostly just supplies right there that we're, we're short of. And then again, I, I understand what you're saying because, hey, I'm in business, I understand. We can buy from here, we can buy from here, we can buy from here. And I don't, and, and that's what we test, you know, Dean with doing and.
And you go for chemicals that we are partnering with Asbury, we are partnering with Farley and trying to get those mass quantities. And I know we're all on the same route, but I don't know if that's saving us any money. And I'm sure Asbury, all these other cities are, they're experiencing it too.
I think we must be putting more staff time toward it too.
It's gonna require more, yes, definitely.
When you look at the expense analysis that she did, the ones that are up, I mean, what we're applying in wages and city taxes and boy, insurance to it is, is a large part of the increase. So, so that's labor. More than going into what we have now. And then Heidi highlighted water, wastewater treatment maintenance was a really big growth.
Maintenance, insurance, and that, you know, and it's, you know, with a new, with a new facility, there's more, there's more labor that goes into, you know, a larger facility and, you know, and, and just to highlight, it's, it's, you know, I, I did highlight a few things that kind of stuck out to me, but I mean, across the board, it, it, it's, it's just ever, it's, it's literally, you know, across the board.
I mean, this is a useful spreadsheet to have as somebody challenges on the detail. It's like, these are, this is what's happened to our costs. We have a bigger wastewater treatment plant and there's more effort going into maintaining it and sustaining.
And this is what we're doing as far as chemicals and parts and on our side.
And, and, you know, it really where the, you know, is, hey, things were growing and then, then the, then the discussion with Dean and talking about this lift station maintenance that is going to be ongoing, which is going to be jumping as well. And so really just getting ahead of, ahead of that known cost as well. Really kind of hammered in that, hey, we need to increase rates is, because if you look at that lift station maintenance, it's, it did grow, but really it's, now that we know that there's some needed repairs there at, at all the lift stations and that that's, that's going to be increasing. That was built into there was, you know, a, a big trigger of a, hey, this rate increase needs to happen sooner rather than later because we know, you know, from fiscal year 2026, those expenses are, you know, almost tripling, so.
You know, Heidi, in all honesty, this really, these increases should have started back in 2015 when they were planning this wastewater treatment plant, they knew the listation maintenance was coming up. They should have had smaller incremental increases to prepare. Rather than the 2%, 3%, they probably should have been looking at a little bit higher 4%. You know, just to build that reserve.
Who knows?
Yeah, certainly.
Increases year over year in the past, how many years you been here? Eight. It's usually gone up.
Two, three?
Yeah.
Right?
It was in the 2% to 3% range historically.
And probably with keeping pace.
Yeah.
And.
Inflationary period of three years, that is pretty extreme.
And, and it's always been the city's, you know, goal not to, not to over, to, not to overcharge and to adjust as needed as those expenditures go up. There's, you know, there's some that will say, hey, there's some communities that say, hey, we just really wanna have a, a really large, a really, you know, a really large cash reserve. It's, it's always been the city of Piastas intention to keep rates as low as they can and, and continue to, to operate. So when, you know, the lift station, the wastewater treatment plant, and then the operating all kind of happens, this is, you know, this is where we're at. And I, I've kind of continued that, that same sentiment is that the, although these rate increases from a percentage standpoint seem high, it's not over, it's not really over and, you know, building the fund, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. It's really, it's really maintaining that balance and having it grow slightly. Grow slightly with, you know, without large one-time expenditures. So certainly, you know, there's, there's different avenues and ways to look at trying to build, you know, you know, always having two to three to four to five million in the fund. And that's just, that hasn't historically been the direction from the city is that we want to just, you know, maintain and continue and to charge, you know, the lea- the least amount with, the least amount possible with, and also being able to main, maintain operations. And if that direction's different, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, different rate structures. But I know we want to stay competitive with the other communities around. And, you know, right now, everything is expen- everything is going up in price. So that's where this, this, basically this three-year adjustment has been made is, hey, we know that these expenses are coming up and they're coming up now. Can we extend this, you know, can we extend them out to kind of soften that blow? And that's, you know, that's what I came up with, but there's always, you know, and, and I'll say that there's, there is a million different ways that this could be, you know, increased, you know, you can, you can shift it more on a base or on a, or on a, on a usage rate. Or, you know, I guess council could say, hey, we're not, we're not gonna raise any rates and you know, wait, wait until money, you know, you don't have any money at all. And then you look at raising rates 50%. I mean, that, you know, I have communities that do that too. But I just wanna keep you from, you know, from a standpoint of really getting to a point where it's, you're in an emergency standpoint and there's, and there's no cash in the fund.
Yeah, we don't wanna delete the fund, so that's.
Send out the future councils for destruction.
Yeah, we're out, see you.
And I have some communities that say, hey, why, you know, why do we keep it so conservative? And it, and it is more work to be looking at it every two to three years and, and staying in that. It's more work from that standpoint, but it's also being fiscally responsible with the user rates.
Yeah, that's for being fiscally responsible.
Well, I'm not, I'm not seeing a lot of leeway in where we're at. You know, I don't.
We don't wanna be more aggressive, do we, John? We don't wanna be more aggressive, act out bigger funds, that'd be, we're matching sewer to what we're already.
I think if, if, my thought, and this was, this was my thought, Brian, was, you know, we look at that three-year and I've kind of cut that off the 20% of the percentage we're looking at. And then, you know, we've got 2% at that, at that juncture, instead of two, do we do the two and a half? Or, you know what I'm saying, it's not really more aggressive, but do we start building more funds after we get back to where we're, and I, and I wanna say solvent because we are solvent, but in a better position?
We talked about that 2% in year four and beyond at the council meeting and it's like crystal ball. The reality is it probably won't be 2% when we get there, if I remember, I just answer.
Well, it, it just depends on your infrastructure needs and I do have, I have some communities that instead of doing a solid 2% every year, they, they increase it by the CPI. And so that's something that could be evaluated, you know, at that, at that point. I think it's, I think we're just a little too far off from making that, that decision of, you know, we're at 2%. You know, maybe, maybe it's a pause for a year and then you, you know, and then you look at getting those two or 3% rate increases, you know, going forward. It, I mean, it honestly just depends on how much, how much growth really does come in from, from the residential side that we know that's coming, there is some commercial industrial coming as well. But when you're in this kind of the high growth that the city's seeing, I'd wanna kind of delay that decision of, you know, what you're doing in year four, you know, for a future council to say, hey, we're going to stick with the two or look at a CPI or, you know, you know, if your growth is way overcome, you know, and you're, and you're really building that fund and you wanna take one year pause, you know, I'd like to leave that up to the future councils to, to, to make that determination.
Is this something we're gonna be looking at, we're gonna, if we're gonna set this, we're gonna do the three-year?
In the third year, I think we.
It doesn't sound like a challenge.
I mean, we're gonna set like, if we, let's just say we were deciding tonight, we're not. But if we're deciding, yes, this is what's happening.
By ordinance.
By ordinance, we are going to set these percentages for the next three years.
That is correct.
I just were wondering about doing it, you know, annual. Is that, is there any value?
Let's go back and amend the, the ordinance. I think it's better like what Heidi, I was just started the conversation, rip the Band-Aid off. I think it's better for people that are planning to know what costs are coming up rather than just year by year wondering when you're gonna shake your magic eight ball where it's gonna lead.
Really more on the business and commercial side for people to know what their total costs are gonna be when they're talking about coming up. Yes, the pollers budget year to year and go, oh my gosh.
Oh, that's right, I watered my line.
But let me just have to clarify, the first rate increases for FY 25, 26, so that started July 1st.
Yes.
That's the year we're in.
Well, we did, we did the 2% for this year, so this will start effect in July 1, 2026, correct Heidi? The first increase?
You know, certainly it, it could have, I do have, I do have it occurring sometime in fiscal year 2026 since we're still within, you know, that year. You know, otherwise we're just waiting an entire year.
Yeah.
If we, if we raise this next month, the first year is actually taking a 12% increase.
That's where I was going, just in two.
Well, a- actually, actually I have it based off of your rates from 2025.
There you go.
So maybe it's another stage.
Yeah, so it's, it, it's not a full 10, it's, it's. Yeah, so it's, it, it's not a full ten, it's, it's. Um, yeah, you're really looking more at, um, an eight, you know, an additional eight on top of. That two that you've already put in place.
So there's another eight and we need to do it, you know, in the next few months where the analysis would. Uh, stale for ten, ten months.
Yes, uh, and so really it's going to, you know, it's going to, you know, if you put it in place, you know, December, let's say you put it in for December one, so you have a half of a year. Um. Of those rates.
Merry Christmas. With that, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Oh.
Well. And we, again, we're not in a. Position where we can pick and choose, I think it's. We're, we're going to have. The people not, if they're not happy, they're going to be happy either we, we do it in October's or we do it in December. If there's not, it's not going to make a big difference. It's not really going to make any difference. The sooner we get started on it, it makes a bigger difference for the city.
Overall, yeah.
Overall. Builds the fund, gets things more in line, covers these added expenses that were already occurring. Because it's going to take six months just to catch up probably to that for what. For this year and make up for last year. Questions? Other answers?
Heidi, if we approve this in our ordinance, like, when do we? When do we go out to the market to set the rate on the loan?
For the water project, so the way that, the way that S R F works is that, um. To go into the loan, basically the project has to, um. Meet all of the S R F requirements, meaning it goes all the way through its environmental review. Um, and then the city has the clear to go out, um. To bid for construction, so you have to actually have construction bids. And then you have to have, um, a couple D N R sign offs. And then, um, you have to apply, and then once you have that, you can apply, um. You can apply with the application, um, the rate incre- the rate increase, um, has to be in there as well. So, um, if you're looking at, um. You know, taking this project out to bid and starting it, um. Yet this fall, the water rates really need to start moving, uh, because those rates have to be passed, um. You know, before we can close on the loan, but really the timing of it really, it really happens.
So we can, we can, yeah, we could. It is recorded. So that, yeah. Yep.
And so we can't lock, yeah, we're not locking in any type of interest rate until, really until you've, you've taken it out to bid, um. And so.
We're probably six months out from that.
I think you're about six months out, but I think you're looking at next spring.
We have the D N.
Yeah, we have the environmental done and we, and I believe, I need to check into the two signed, yours from D N R. I don't know what those consist of, so I can check with.
So that it'd be these rates in place and construction bids.
Getting these rea- getting these rates in place by ordinance is the easy part. You just take them through council.
I don't know.
Um. Right.
We're probably three to four months out if, if we move fast.
All right, that, that improves our position on the loan, right?
Mm hmm.
If we have these new rate.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. They probably charge us a lot. All right, sure.
I don't. I don't think we've got any more for you, Heidi, um. I think we, we know where, what we need to do, we're just.
Don't want to.
Yeah, don't want to.
Yeah, I did, nobody, you don't, yeah, I want to make sure that when those questions come in, um. You can, you can answer them as, as best as possible.
Yeah, I think we've got some, I don't want to say ammunition, but we've got some ammunition. Uh, you know, for answering those questions.
Explanation.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's reasoning behind it, it's not just on a win.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, these are, these are the decisions that have to be made and for the betterment of the community, so. All right, uh. I think we're good?
Thank you.
All right, thanks Heidi.
Heidi, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right.
All right, bye.